All right, we'll call a meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome everyone. Tom, take the roll call, please.
Mayor King.
President.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Posma.
Present.
Baker.
Yep.
Laskin. Fisher.
Present.
Reshusta. Helly.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number one's a motion adopting the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have number two is a motion approving our minutes from April 1st, 2024, meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. I have number three, under recognition and award, I have an Arbor Day proclamation I'd like to read. Whereas trees and forest soils keep our lakes and streams clean by absorbing and filtering pollutants and sediments, and whereas forests preventing flooding and reduce stormwater by capturing and storing rainwater and snowmelt, which is then slowly released to our lakes, streams, and groundwater, and whereas careful management of our trees and forests protects drinking water and reduces the cost of water treatment, and whereas sound management of forest lands, forested lands surrounding the Mississippi River ensures clean drinking water for more than 1 million Minnesotans, and whereas about three quarters of Minnesotans get their drinking water from the forested parts of the state, and whereas planting and maintaining trees is a natural and easy way to keep our water clean, and whereas the last Friday in April and throughout the month of May, Minnesotans pay special tribute to our trees as national resources and dedicate ourselves to the validity and vitality of our forests. Now therefore, I, Stephen M. King, Mayor of Austin, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26th, 2024, as Arbor Day, and I do hereby proclaim the month of May, 2024, as Arbor Month in the city of Austin. Thank you. Under the consent agenda, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under bid openings and awards, I have number five is resolution receiving bids for 10-unit tea hanger project. Stephen or Mitch?
I'll take this one. So we've talked a little, we've talked a bit previously about the 10-unit tea hanger project that we're planning for the Austin Municipal Airport. We received three bids on this project. Ever Strong Construction, Inc., they were the low bidder at $1,843,820.75. Second bidder was Metcon Construction, Inc., at $1,893,202.65. And in third was the Joseph Company, Inc., at $1,873,274.70. So they're fairly close bids, ranging apart, maximum of $30,000. And when we receive federal dollars on a project like this, we are also required to have a DBE goal as part of the project. And you can see there in your backup material that the two low bidders did not meet the DBE goal with the subcontractor they chose, but the third bidder met the DBE goal. So we did some review of their bids. We requested and reviewed their good faith efforts to meet that DBE goal. And after reviewing all of the information provided, we would recommend awarding this bid to the Joseph Company in the amount of $1,873,274.70, as they were the only bidder to meet the DBE goal when I can say that two of the bidders received all of similar subcontractor information. One of them chose the DBE, the other did not, and that resulted in the difference in the bids. So after evaluation, we'd recommend awarding this to the Joseph Company.
Thanks for the explanation, Stephen. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Lang on this?
Stephen, two quick ones. So this DBE, it's just a goal, it's not a requirement?
That is correct.
What is the nature of the... I looked at Dulus Excavating's website and I guess I wasn't convinced that they were a DBE by looking at who's involved.
So we don't determine that. That is a classification that they receive from the state based on information that they have to provide the state, whether it be minority-owned or female-owned, or there's different criteria that they need to meet through the state in order to get that criteria. So that's not something that we determine.
Or verify.
Correct.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Lang? If not, looking for resolution, I have number five.
So moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Nay.
Fisher.
Aye.
Austin, I'm sorry, Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 4-1, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number six, resolution receiving bids for 8th Street Northeast and Institute Lift Station Project. Mitch, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So we were talking about the 8th Street and 8th Street Northeast and Institute Lift Station Project over the last few months, this winter, and we received bids for that on April 9th. We had four bidders. One was rejected due to an incomplete bid. They did not fill out the proper forms, so we rejected that bid. We were unable to see their price. But the other three bids were good. Yuland Brothers was a low bidder with a price of $2,464,584. The engineer's estimate was just over 2.9 million, so it was a pretty good low bid. So we would recommend awarding the construction to Yuland Brothers. And in addition to their costs, we have already incurred some expenses for geotechnical and planning with our consultant on this project. Then we'll also have some electrical costs through Austin Utilities and Fox Electric during construction as well. So that will total about $50,000. So grand total, the project will cost just over 2.5 million.
Very good. Thanks, Mitch. Counsel, any questions for Mitch?
Motion to approve.
Second. Tom.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
You bet.
Fisher.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number seven's resolution receiving bids for street striping. Mitch?
Yeah, this is our annual street striping work that we do on our main streets in town. You know, think of the yellow center lines, many linear, like a bike lane or turning lanes, things like that. So we requested quotes from three contractors. Two of the contractors did not provide me with a quote. One said they were too busy, the other one just never responded to my emails or calls. But the low, or the contractor that did provide a quote was Sir Lines A Lot with a total of $14,240.90. They performed our work last year, and they also purchased the two companies that did the work for us the prior two years. So this kind of, they seem to be gobbling up the traffic marketing services in the state. So it's our only bidder, and I think the price is a little higher than previous years, but I know the cost of paint has risen since then, so we'd recommend awarding to Sir Lines A Lot.
Excellent. Thank you, Mitch. Counsel, any questions on this?
I'm really disappointed for Jason that he's not here, because I know this is his favorite one to approve every year.
Best name ever.
Pretty creative.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thomas.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Fisher.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number eight's resolution receiving bids for the municipal pool painting. Jason?
Honorable Mayor and Council, I'm going to pass around a couple of paint samples to take a look at that I'll talk about here in a moment. I want to clarify that this is not a formal bid process, like some of the other items you've seen tonight. The cost of this project is below the bid threshold, so these are actually gathering quotes. But because of the importance of the nature, we felt it was important to let city council know what was going on with this, with the swimming pool. So the pool was painted in late October, even into November of 2020, is my understanding. And the pool paint has failed miserably since then. It was painted by an outside contractor. Last summer, there was issues with the paint flakes while the pool was open, flaking away, entering our filtration system, creating safety hazards. So we knew that we had to do something this year. However, it was not, it's not in the budget this year, which I noticed fairly quickly on the job here. So our crew started doing some research, talking to paint companies, talking to other municipal pools in the area, and then inspecting the pool. We inspected the pool two months ago, there was flaking. A month and a half later, it was even worse because of the weather conditions. We think the freezing and the warming up of the weather. So we came up with a plan, because of the time sensitivity, that we were going to try to do our best to remove the paint, the failing paint from the pool in-house, because we didn't have a lot of time or the funds to go out to bid, because the entire process to blast the paint flakes away and paint the pool was above that bid threshold, which we would just back into after the opening of the pool, and we would have been forced to close the pool for safety reasons. So the last couple of weeks, we went out there and we tried scraping away. We tried with an air compressor, we tried with a pressure washer to start blasting these paint flakes that you can see are about as thick as a credit card. And there's almost no end. And so there is a point where you get to an end where the flakes are... So one of the issues is the paint is not adhering to the concrete surface. There are some areas we find where you can blast away and it'll stay connected to the surface, but one example I want to show you is if, so like if you're looking at the shallow end of the pool, and let's say this is the wall where children climb out of the pool here. So let's say this flake right here is connected very well, it's not scraping, flaking away anymore. There's still a cut hazard right here on your knees, on your toes, and the same goes for all shallow areas where the, you know, younger children and adults will walk in the shallow areas. So we, we did not feel comfortable opening the pool in, with that plan. So we switched gears, and we had already been reaching out to other companies that blast, that paint, getting quotes, getting cost estimates. I kind of refined our search, I asked for new cost estimates. We switched gears for a lot of fiscal reasons to ask for quotes to blast only the main pool. Because last summer, our crew in-house actually got rid of the paint flakes and we painted ourself, and that pool is holding out. We feel like we can open up the, we can do some minor repairs and open up the dive well, so we're not so worried about that. It's the main pool. So what's before us this evening is to go after these quotes for what it would cost to blast only the main pool area. So we did receive two quotes for that. Originally, we received three, but one company's not available to do any of the work until after the pool closes in the fall. So we narrowed our consideration to the two that you see here. One's from Anderson Sand Blasting for $44,779, and the other is M Keys Dustless Mobile Blasting, $145,712. This seems like a giant difference, and there's a few reasons. One, my understanding is that Anderson Sand Blasting has all their own equipment, they don't have to rent anything. They also have a large crew, and so they're going to come in and knock it out in a shorter period of time. They also use a different system where M Keys Dustless is... Originally, they came out, did a test, blast with sand. That was going slower than they had hoped. So then they went back with an aggregate, a different type of aggregate, that's much more costly, but they can get the project done in half. But they have to order two pallets of this, and it's not cheap. So, and I spoke with him on the phone today, that's part of the reason why those bids are so different. So after talking with staff and understanding that we did not feel comfortable opening the pool in the condition it's in because of liability reasons, we're recommending to contract with a considerably lower cost estimate submitted by Anderson Sand Blasting. And kind of a breakdown, or before that, I think one way to keep the cost down for us is then now Park's crew, we will order the paint ourselves and we will roll on the paint ourselves. And we have done that in the past, and that can be done, and it can be done the right way. So that's going to save us some costs. So the overview of the cost to do this is the blasting only for the main pool would be $44,779. The paint supplies, based on an estimate we had from another company, we're guessing, not guessing, we're estimating about $50,000. The roll-off containers, we didn't get a solid cost estimate, but we feel pretty comfortable that we can get that done. Certainly no more than 10,000. I think that's a little bit higher, but I wanted to make sure we had funding in the budget to do this project. Park staff labor, we think we can paint the entire pool in one week with four employees, so the cost there of labor only would be a little over $7,000. Added a 10% contingency because there are some unknown. So that brings the total cost estimate to $123,001. And so if council does approve this, these funds, we feel we can have the pool ready to go. I think our estimated opening is June 4th, I want to say, June 3rd, Monday, June 3rd. So in a nutshell, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, staff recommends council approve the above process in an estimated amount of $123,001. $123,001. And allow staff to contract with Anderson Sand Blasting, Inc. to blast and remove the paint from the main pool. Staff requests to fund the project with building fund allocation funds. And just want to point out, the alternative is a difficult one. It's perhaps not opening the pool this summer. And I'm not sure that's the best option either, but I'd be happy to answer any questions any of you might have.
Well, thank you, Jason, for that, doing your due diligence and trying to find the best way to get this thing taken care of. Yeah.
You're welcome. And I do want to point out one other thing. Typically, this is an item that I would bring before the Park Recreation and Forestry Board. We've kicked it around the last couple of meetings, it's been a discussion on the agenda to talk about the pool and the condition of the pool, because we have some other repairs that we've been working on that are in the budget. But because of timing, we just couldn't bring it to the board. I would rather have a recommendation from the park board to city council. I did, just so you know, I did email the Park Recreation and Forestry Board, so they are all aware. And I also included the information in your packet tonight, so they are aware of the situation.
Thank you. No, I appreciate the pool as an amenity, I think we need to keep it around. Now, Tom, is there a building fund or something, or you'd get this money from?
Yeah, as Jason and I spoke, we would recommend or request council authorization, building fund allocation for those costs. The labor will just be charged as regular labor, so that's the seven grand that will just be charged with regular apartments. But we certainly have funds. Interest rate market is in our favor these days with $450,000 of interest earnings going into the building fund. So, you know, we're not even using, you know, half or a third of it with this.
How do we know it's going to last more than three years this time? Or don't we?
So, that's a good question. There is no guarantee, and I have reached out to a lot of other municipal pools. Three to four years is the estimated cost for paint to last. But if it's done correctly, you don't have to blast all the old stuff away every year. You can paint over it and it'll adhere to the previous paint. There are companies that I'm looking at, just timing is different, but there is one company that says that they will give a 10-year warranty for their paint. But that's just sort of come to light, and they're not available to paint this year. So I think being new to this specific facility, we're looking at that. And so I should point out that Craig Clark actually, when I, right after I started and I was talking about the pool, suggested we start looking into doing a pool condition assessment. So we've come a long ways with that. We got a proposal today, and I got an email. We're considering hiring a firm that's pool professionals to go through our pool and give us an assessment. This is what's wrong with your pool, this is what needed to be replaced 10 years ago, this is what needs to be replaced in the next 10 years. These are the dollar amounts for all of these things. Because I feel like, and Craig, I think is the reason he brought it up, is we're throwing money at this pool blindly in a way. And we want to try to have a better process and a plan to try to get this pool back to where it needs to be.
So this will just be a Band-Aid for a little bit, hopefully, whether it lasts 10 years, we're hoping, but if it doesn't, the assessment's going on to see maybe down the road of new pools in the line.
Can you, can you talk a little bit about what we heard from the public regarding the pool when we went through the master plan process? Put me on the spot.
No, that's fine. So that's one of the, you know, the master plan's a big deal right now. And so a lot of my evenings, we're going through the PDF of the community feedback part of the master plan, because that's important to us. The great thing about that is you can search pool, you can search swimming and all that kind of stuff. So I can, if I want to focus on what did the public think about the pool, that's what I did. And so there were minor concerns, there was... Most of the comments had to do, didn't have to do with repairs, really. It had to do with maybe expanding the splash pad and some of the activity in and around the pool, which we're going to strengthen. We're going to have more supervision out there this year. But is there something specific you were looking for?
Well, I just, do we get a sense that this is an amenity that the community would value and appreciate? That it ranks pretty high?
Yeah, so, you know, doing the search, pool, click, pool, 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 all throughout those comments. So for that, yes, a lot of, a large percentage of residents who filled out that survey that had to do with the master plan, pool was up there, trails was up there, playgrounds was up there. It definitely was one of the more common comments.
How many unique visitors did we have to the pool in 2019? And how many unique visitors did we have last year? I'm just curious.
I don't know that I have access to those numbers.
Do we track that anywhere?
I will certainly look into that, but I'm not...
Yeah, I think we can get that. I believe we do.
Do we, seeing as all the last paint only lasted, what, a year and a half, less than a year and a half? Do we have any recourse with the people that painted it for us before? Get anything from them, or? I mean, I know there's probably no, apparently no guarantee or warranty. You say it could be two or three years, and one company offers 10, but this company had to have said something when they did it. I would certainly hope that it would last more than a year and a half. Obviously, this failed last year, or has been failing for a while, so.
Yeah.
At the administrative level, we've been having conversation with that contractor.
Okay.
Starting last fall. The contractor alleges that it was not a contractor flaw, it was some kind of a paint flaw. And he attempted to get the paint manufacturer involved in the solution and kept setting deadlines for which he would come back and tell us that the paint manufacturer was going to stand behind it. My last communication to him was that I set a date certain in March that if we didn't hear from him, we were going to sandblast the pool, move forward, and then consider our legal recourse after that, because he has not stepped forward to stand behind his work or his product. But to answer the question about how do we know if it's going to last three years? We don't, but at least the explanation that we were getting through that process was that he didn't sandblast the prior paint off and then applied a different paint that's not compatible with the underlying paint, which is why you had separation between the layers and ultimately the peeling process. So the hope would be that removing all of the paint going to the concrete surface and then applying a good coat of paint there, it will adhere to the concrete and we won't have interactions between different types of paint.
Excellent. Jason?
Talking to the professionals, our understanding, there's two issues with when the paint was applied. For whatever reason, the city did not contract out to remove the old paint. The second was, according to the paint company who sold the paint to that contractor that Mr. Byram's talking about, mixed the paint incorrectly. And so for whatever reason, that caused that paint to fail and also fail where the paint, you know, from painting 10 times ago or six times ago. Why those, you know, examples I sent around are so thick? This is several years of painting. These all came apart from the concrete. So the two reasons, or the two, our best understanding is the reason for failure that first year is not blasting and getting down to concrete and having a good, strong surface to apply the new paint, and then also not mixing the paint correctly.
And you got to realize, when that was done last year, it was done by pool staff and not professionals. They were out there scraping it and painting it and...
So that was to repair the kiddie pool, the smaller pool that's over by itself, I think northeast of... So that was our staff last year fixing the failed paint from that contractor last summer. So we removed all the old paint, because it was a smaller surface, and then we, as in Park staff, rolled new paint on there, and that's holding. So we're actually hoping to apply another coating of paint this year if we have time, because my understanding is you want to do two quotes, and I think they said they were only get one coat down. So, but that process worked, which makes us feel more confident about us tackling the main pool as long as we get the right paint for the job.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. Everybody's doing their due diligence, I know, and trying to do, get the best result for the citizens, so I appreciate that. Looking for a resolution, I have number eight.
So moved.
Second. Tom.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Fisher.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Under petitions and requests, I have number nine's resolution approving updates to the designees of the data practices policy. Bree.
Mayor and councilmembers, we have a data practices policy that was adopted in March of 2015. The listing of the designees has since changed, and we needed to update those. The city clerk has been updated to myself, and then we have added Craig Byram, the city attorney, to that list as well. All the other information within this policy remains the same. So I'm requesting that the council authorize these changes.
Thanks, Bree. Looking for a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Fisher.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number 10's resolution approving an off-sale liquor license transfer to Austin Spirits LLC, doing business as Austin Spirits. Bree.
So Star Liquor of Austin has completed all of their paperwork to transfer their license from their business to Austin Spirits. The clerk's office would request that council authorize the transfer of the off-sale liquor license from Star Liquor of Austin Incorporated to Austin Spirits LLC. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
Was this sold, then? Is that why it's transferring?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Fisher.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
I have number 11 is approving, a resolution approving an off-sale liquor license, application to Roddy Shyam Corporation, doing business as One Stop Liquor and Tobacco. Bree.
We received an application for an off-sale hard liquor license from Robbie Shyam Corp., DBA One Stop Liquor and Tobacco. That's at 902 12th Street, Southwest. This is a new license request. The city of Austin has a limit of 10 off-sale liquor licenses. We currently have six of these issued. So the clerk's office has received the certification documents that are required for this license, and we recommend approval. Approval is also being recommended by Police Chief David McKeegan. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Bree. Counsel, any questions?
Moved to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Fisher.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. I have number 12 is a resolution expanding Hy-Vee Incorporated liquor license to the patio area. Bree.
So we are updating the information for Hy-Vee Incorporated. That's at 1307 18th Avenue, Northwest, to expand their liquor license to their outdoor fenced patio area to the east of their building. The clerk's office would request that the council authorize the approval of this expansion.
Thank you, Bree. Counsel, any questions? If not, looking for a resolution?
Moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thomas.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Fisher.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 5-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have number 13's resolution approving a tea hanger consultant agreement.
Yes.
Yes, for the project that was previously awarded this evening, S E H has provided a proposal to complete the construction administration inspection and geotechnical services. The geotechnical services materials testing, that'll actually be done by a subconsultant, which is Braun Intratech. Together, the proposal is in the amount of ninety-eight thousand six hundred dollars. Funding for this would be covered with 90% federal dollars, 5% state, and 5% local funds. Recommend awarding a contract to S E H for this work.
Excellent. Thank you, Stephen. Council, any questions on item number 13?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yes.
Fisher.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number 14 is a resolution approving the Anderson Farm Lease Agreement with Laux Farms. Stephen?
One second.
No problem.
We have been working with Laux Farms for the for the past few years to farm a piece of property that the city owns just south of the airport. It's 32 acres. You can see in your map, it is broken up into actually three smaller fields. So they, because of this, like we've talked about with the previous lease agreement, I think it was out at the Cook Farm, was when you create these smaller fields, there's a lot of end rows, a lot of inefficiencies that are created as part of this. So this lease rate is is less than what you would see for a larger square rectangular field. But we have worked out a price of not one hundred and ninety-five dollars per acre. This would be a three-year agreement, 2024 through 2026 crop years, and it would generate six thousand two hundred and forty dollars per year. When the city generates money from properties, we then have to pay property tax. And so out of that revenue, the city would be paying about twenty-two hundred dollars in property taxes each year, or that's what is it, it was here in 2023, may grow up slightly over the course of this three-year agreement. But we would recommend awarding this contract or this agreement to Laux Farms.
Excellent. Thank you, Stephen. Council, any questions on this item?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
You bet.
Fisher.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, your honor.
Thanks, Tom. Item number 15 is a resolution approving the Socorro Consulting Contract. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor. Members, before you, upon approval of the Socorro Consulting Contract, Mr. Socorro brought to our attention that it did not include incidental expenses of cost for transportation, lodging, meals, and material costs. Because of that, we brought it back for your approval. We don't assume anything in a contract unless it's spelled out. That's listed on page three of Exhibit One of those costs, we'd ask for your approval.
Thank you, Craig. Council, any questions on this item?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Posma.
Aye.
Baker.
Yep.
Fisher.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes five zero, your honor.
Thank you. Item number 16 is a few, a couple motions granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following location, 16A. Address is six fifteen Fourteenth Street Northeast, the Beetle Property. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16B, address is one thousand five Eighth Street Northwest, the Fink Property.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item number 17, granting the power, the planning and zoning department the power to contract the removal of an abandoned sign at the following location, 17A. Address is one oh two Main Street South, Jaguar Communications LLC. Holly, do you have something to add on that or is this normal? Do you have anything to add? Your name's here.
No, I mean, we'll still continue to work with them, but we haven't heard back yet.
Okay. Council, any questions? If not, looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to citizens addressing the council, are there any citizens present who would like to speak to the council that aren't on the agenda or waiting for the work session? Hearing none. Moving on to honorary council member, Birthday Boy, come Wednesday, Miguel's birthday. Happy early birthday. And any comments other than you wish and you weren't getting to hear older? Okay. Thank you. Paul?
Nothing, your honor.
Jeff?
Nothing, your honor.
Jeff?
Chuck.
Mike?
Discover Austin and Life Marne County are partnering for the second annual beer, bacon, and beignets on April 27th. I highly recommend you get your tickets because all three of those things sound delicious.
Excellent. Sounds good. Tara?
Nothing.
And sorry, I, Craig, I went over the top, either. Okay.
Nothing.
Good. Very good. I just have one thing to read as we came out of our closed session last last meeting. So at the first public meeting after that, we, the the comments regarding the Craig Clark's evaluation. The city council held a closed meeting, closed meeting for the purpose of evaluating the performance of city administrator Craig Clark. All members of the council and Mr. Byram were present. In addition, the city attorney Craig Byram and the city administrator Craig Clark were present. The meeting was scheduled for the purpose of reviewing Mr. Clark's efforts to continue to make progress on employee engagement, seek additional training or guidance related to interpersonal skill development, especially in the area of conflict resolution and soft skills, and foster efforts in all levels of local government to establish and foster a positive team-focused work environment. The council noted that at every level of local leadership, including council, administration, department heads, and supervisory staff, share in this responsibility and are committed to working together as a team to improve communication, collaboration, and conveying policy decisions effectively and consistently. This meeting was held immediately after a regular council meeting at which the council approved a contract with Socorro Consulting, which will provide detailed guidance on how entry from every level of city operations can and should improve. The council expressed confidence in this process and recommended Mr. Clark and his embrace of this process. Mr. Clark outlined for the council his efforts to expand communications and his work with various outside professionals to gain insight into ways in which he can improve communication, both in content and style, in the hopes of building trust and a better understanding of decisions being made. Council acknowledged that often the primary contacts employees may have with administrative staff, including Mr. Clark, are during union contract negotiation. A process that is inherently adversarial and in which Mr. Clark is conveying decisions made by the council. Council members discussed the benefit of both Mr. Clark finding other times, ways, and opportunities to connect with employees, but also the benefit of department heads and supervising employees to also find those opportunities. Such connections help both managing members and employees to build relationships through the year that can build trust and understanding in a less adversarial context. In general, the council expressed a support for Mr. Clark's efforts to follow through with council's direction given at the December 5th, 2023 performance evaluation, and expressed that this is an ongoing process in which the council remains committed to seeing it through. The council expressed a desire to continue to hold performance review sessions with Mr. Clark on a periodic basis in their effort to see progress. Further, council expressed a recommendation that the city be more intentional in Mr. Clark evaluating the performance of department head employees on a periodic basis to ensure that those leaders have the tools they need to be constructive part of the process. The council noted that the Socorro Consulting firm recommends conducting 360-degree evaluations at the end of their process. It was noted that this recommendation makes sense. As such, this portion of the council's prior recommendation will be conducted under the oversight and advice of Socorro Consulting. Overall, the council desires a unified voice behind efforts of all levels of government to accept responsibility for the deterioration of employee engagement over a long historical period, to share in the commitment to find ways to improve and to work together as a team toward a better, higher-functioning, more efficient, and more effective workforce. Thank you. With that, I have nothing else to add, and we can be adjourned until our work session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Will, Mike, you're first on the list on the work session. We'll give about five minutes for the tape to rewind and start another work session. Thank you.